Councilmember Coke.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications, which will be coming up here shortly. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think this evening we'll ask our birthday girl, Judy Anderson, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judy. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
None this evening, ma'am.
Counsel, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Coke. Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have one listed public communication this evening, but we have one that is not on the agenda, and we'll go ahead and take that one up first. So I would just invite the members of the Lions Club to come forward.
Hello. We are back. Last year about this.
And we love it when you come back.
Because last year we came by with some money. It was another big check. This time, we're here with $10,000 to go towards our Lions Club 75th Anniversary Legacy Project, which is the building of the shelter in the park. So we were just here to present a giant check.
Well, we're here to accept it.
(laughter)
So I would just invite the (applause). The mayor tells us all we have to just take him with a big chair. Big chair.
Okay, all right. Everybody look right at the camera and smile. Perfect. Let's keep it going a couple more. And switch it up. Do something a little different. Relax. Kick your leg out.
(laughter) Hold it upside down.
Yeah. And all right, here we go. Ready? All right, here we go. You got it. Very good. Okay.
All right. Let me get a couple as well. All right. And then you have one. No one. All right. Very good. (applause)
So this is towards the end of this check will result in 60% of the cost of the shelter they paid. Of their, of their contribution. Yes. And we, we really appreciate it. Shelters are construction and John, can you have some more notes on what progress on the construction is? Is it 60% construction? Pretty close.
The Shelter All Fall has been put together. We put a rush on the actual physical building component of the shelter back in October. So they will have that fully enclosed hopefully by the first part, second part of December, and be able to work indoors through the winter, wrapping everything up in April. And they know the timeline is kites on the green. It has to be complete and looks pretty for kites on the green. So we'll do a nice ribbon cutting the very first part of May, and certainly all of you will be invited to that.
It's a board picnic.
That's right. Exactly. So we appreciate everything with this.
Have the lion ready.
Oh, yeah. We've already paid for the lion. He's just holding it for us right now.
(inaudible).
Thank you guys.
Can I, can I say something?
Certainly. Of that little group, before they get away, Mary Jane and, and anyway, previous council members, longtime service, I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for the lifetime of volunteering and helping and. Contributions to our community. Contributions to our community. I mean, you guys, thank you. Thank you. (applause) Thank you, Jim, for throwing that in. Nice, nice comments. Okay, we do have another scheduled public communications this evening, and that is an update from Alan Stoy on the Bombers Project. Alan?
Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the council and distinguished city officials, I am excited to be here today, as I was nine months ago or so when we first met, to talk about bombers. And I just wanted to let you know where we're at. The first thing I want to do is appreciate some thanks for the patience and understanding over the last few months. We've had some difficult economic conditions, as well as some changing competition that's kind of come into focus, and that's caused a little bit of a change in our group, as some members, we're going to go a different direction and as opposed to going forward. So I want to wish them the best of luck. Our ownership has now been consolidated, as most of you know, and we're ready to move forward. We're excited to have a few new partners as well. So thanks again, though, for the pages and folks like Adam, who've worked with me through the process. So that said, we're entering our final stretch of things like permitting and getting final architecture and plans before we look to break ground in April here of this year. We have, this is a general picture of what we were talking about initially several months ago, and for the most part, it's going to remain the same. However, over the last several months, and really into focus over the last few weeks, we've made some significant ground on the types of facilities that may go there. And we can take a look at the, the updated picture. So it's still the same kind of structure. A little difficult.
Use the mic. There's a mic there.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Richard's on, Alan.
Hello? All right. So still the same kind of structure, but we've talked about a few different possibilities. Right now, because of confidential agreements and what have you, we have some general things there, but we've got what's called a two-story sports venue, very dissimilar to what Ignite is, but an entertainment, a part of the Bombers Entertainment Complex we're looking at down here. We have a couple different one, one and a half story buildings on the top that we already are looking toward potentials in those positions. I think they are really going to fit well with what we're looking to do here. In the last two weeks, Cushman Wakefield has called me with four different offers of gas stations, banks, urgent, things that don't fit what we're trying to do here for the entertainment center, but it's, it's a great piece of property. I think it's going to be a great project, and that just demonstrated by folks kind of reaching out, trying to continue to work with us. There's a few different things I want to talk about, but ultimately, I look forward to kind of getting some final, you know, milestones in place for when certain things are going to happen, final site plan, groundbreaking, and what have you. We're planning right now of a groundbreaking ceremony in early April, and then actually beginning to go vertical at that time. We are going to do some at-risk grading and things like that to the site on our own in the meantime, but we're looking forward to that. I did have a good piece of news today, and actually just talked with Chief Clark, but I was talking with Captain Johnson, and we previously had offered to donate a building to the fire department in order for them to burn it and do training and things like that, but because of timeframes, it, they weren't able to do that. But as of now, they are. So the delay was for a wonderful purpose, but, so that'll be, that'll be kind of neat. They've expressed interest in doing some training here in the winter, just internally and things like that, and then actually doing an actual burn, so that'll be good. And the one other thing I wanted to point out, we've tried to involve a lot of different people in this project, from Johnson to work with a lot of people. And so there's one young man I want to highlight, who's actually been part of keeping our site in order. And, or if I get a call from Adam and it says, hey, this isn't quite in order, I send this guy out there and it gets in order. So he is a junior in high school who started a business when he was 14. His name is Drew McGregor. He has a business called The Gods of Saad. And he has, as a junior in high school, now has a few trucks, several mowers, several employees, so a young entrepreneur, it was a small business owner, if you will, who is right here from, from Johnson, at Johnson High School, and has been working. So we'll, we'll have him do some snow and other things like that during this time, but I just wanted to point out a young Johnston citizen who's really getting out there and working hard. So thanks again. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's full speed ahead.
Counsel, have any questions for Alan?
I don't, I don't have a question.
Yes.
But thank you for making this happen. We've been waiting for it a long time. We had this question mark up there. We didn't know what happened, but thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
This is an exciting update. Looking, looking forward to, more great things to come.
Thank you very much.
We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Cindy, anybody online? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is the Authorization of Loan and Disbursement Agreement and the Issuance of Notes to Evidence the Obligation of the City There Under and Approval of Resolution Number 22-306, a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action. We will open the public hearing at 7:14. Is this yours, Teresa? Does somebody claim this item?
This is for the, talked about this earlier. This is for the actual, the authorization for our SRF loan for the segment A for our water that would run up to the northwest area and exit. So if you remember earlier, we talked about that the design was getting underway and we approved that contract. This is part of that public hearing that would be able to disperse those loans for that project.
Counsel, have any questions for Matt? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council?
I, I have a question, sorry.
Whoops. Councilman, ready?
Yeah, yes. You're, the drinking water facility in that northwest integration area, will this be effective with Xenio claiming things? How will this work with Xenio thingy?
No, this, this service would be inside the Johnston two-mile boundary. This is the one that runs from 78th over to 141, and then up north along 141 to right about Towner Drive.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:16. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-306? No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. It's my understanding that we have someone that would like to address one of the items on the consent agenda?
No.
Oh, the non-consent. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion?
I did.
Second.
A second?
You did.
You'll have to speak up so I can hear you tonight.
All right.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the Non-Consent Agenda, Item 7A. Consider second reading of Ordinance Number 1083, an ordinance amending the Johnston revised ordinances of 2007, Chapter 155, to opt in, to adopt a new Johnston Building Code and Ordinance Number 1087, an ordinance amending the Johnston revised ordinances of 2007, Chapter 159, to adopt a new fire code. And this is the second reading.
This is, so we have no changes, and we have not had any public outreach or questions in regard to these two ordinances.
Counsel, have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second reading of Ordinance Number 1083?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1087?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B. Consider second reading of Ordinance Number 1089, amending the Johnston revised ordinances of 2007, by amending Section 69.08 to modify parking on Meadow Circle, Prairie Place, and to correct a minor Scrivener's error.
Good evening. This is second reading. There have been no changes to the ordinance as presented. I did provide the maps as requested from the first meeting. I did receive public comment over the phone, and they had indicated they were going to attend the meeting and like an opportunity to speak on this matter. Other than that, I have no further updates to provide at this time. Happy to take any questions or go into detail if needed.
Counsel, have any questions for Clayton? If not, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item?
Hi. Never done this before in my heart.
Please state your name and your address.
My name's Felicia Moss. I live at 4910 Prairie Place.
And I'm Hatta Sulich. I live at 5004 Prairie Place.
Okay. We're a bit confused and not understanding why, after 16 years of residence in this house, why this is now being looked at. I was given three different reasons when I spoke to the person on the postcard. I'm unclear as to the truth. I was first told that it was because roundabouts and cul-de-sacs are all no parking in Johnston, so I drove around. My sister's block, two others in my neighborhood, three others in other areas. It's clearly not. I don't know why I was told that, and if it is, I'm not sure why we're being picked on. I was then told that it was a complaint from neighbors, or a neighbor, and they would not tell me who it was. I understand that. Sorry. I do understand why they wouldn't give that specific name. We do have our suspicions. However, that's one person, and we're like 50 people who don't want this. Now, we are the two that could get here to represent, and if it continues, we will bring more as we go, or get a petition. I don't know how to handle this. I've never had one person be able to speak up and get the intention of a city before. I don't know if it's because we have a lot of money or what our day job is, but either way, it seems a lot of power for one person if that's all it was. Then I was told that it was because of service vehicles, or snowplows, or garbage trucks, or whatever, but the fact of the matter is, snow ordinance come in effect, and therefore, it doesn't impact that circle drive because nobody can park on the street. We don't have problems with this. We're not really sure why this has become a problem. Like I said, I've lived there for 16 years. I've lived in Johnston for 20 to 25. I'm kind of dumbfounded. I don't understand why I can't get a reason as to why this is happening, and it seems that all three seem to be a little off-kilter in some way or another, because either what, our streets narrower than everybody else's cul-de-sac, where we're the only ones, and Meadow are the only ones that have a problem with trash can people getting around, or whatever the case is, or if we just have one loud neighbor. And I really would hate to think that one loud neighbor can affect two blocks at least, and I think I heard Rose, but that wasn't on my postcard. Yeah, I just, I don't understand. I don't understand. But we're very against it, because our neighborhood is getting to the point where we are maturing, and we, a lot of us have teenagers, and with teenagers come vehicles, and vehicles friends, and then when we have people over, now I have to be worried about my guests being towed. That's not pleasant. I mean, no one wants to go to somebody's neighborhood where they are going to get towed. On top of that, if you take that away from us, that leaves eight parking places total for the entire street. And then our, my handicap mother, or my niece who has special disability who's blind, is going to have to park where? Clear over on Dewey, or on the main road of 49th, where she could get hit as well, trying to maneuver her way to my home? I mean, it just, it doesn't make any sense, and I don't understand why. And I feel that we are being unfairly targeted, and I'm not getting truth, because it's not a Johnston thing to be able to park on a cul-de-sac, yet that's what I was told. So when I drive around and I find out that the majority is not that way, they can park on the cul-de-sac. And by the way, we're talking about what, three total parking places?
Yeah.
Because a lot of them, one's by a fire hydrant, another one doesn't even have enough space to park in front of the house, or in that spot. So I mean, you're literally talking like.
Three spots.
Three to four spots. So what would you like to say? Do you have anything else to add?
No, you, you did well.
It just, it boggles my mind to think that one person, who didn't even have enough sense to knock on our doors, I would have gone to Hatta's house, I would have gone to Andy's, or John's, or anybody else's. We all know each other. So how it got here, I don't know, but we really, really do not want this.
Thank you for your comments. This is second reading on this proposed ordinance change.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
The postcard gave less than a week notice to get to the first meeting, and the postcard did not say anything about subsequent meetings. I had to call to get that information. Nor was it posted on any websites or anything, which I do follow very closely, and I would have seen it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your persistence. Clayton, can you remind us why this item is before us?
We did receive a complaint from a resident on the street, and I don't recall exactly who it was. That complaint came through Public Works. That's why I don't know precisely who it is. Perhaps Matt can diverge, divulge more of that information. It's a policy that we try not to have parking in cul-de-sacs to allow for the proper turning radius of larger vehicles, fire engines, delivery vehicles. She is correct, snowplows would not probably be impacted because we have our snow ordinance, but other larger vehicles could have those difficulties. She's correct, not every cul-de-sac is signed and dedicated as a no parking zone, but we're trying to correct those as we come across them and find them. And, you know, if desired, you know, council can direct staff to do a more thorough look, and we can correct additional areas where we have this situation. But we have looked in the past, and a fire engine, for example, does need the full radius of the cul-de-sac to make a proper turning movement for them to be able to exit a cul-de-sac. In this particular case, I think it is important to remember that the change is only impacting the cul-de-sac bulb itself. And Cindy, I don't know if you want to open up the, yeah, the, either or. Maybe the existing, actually. So I'm going to come over to this map. On Prairie Place, there is one parking spot here, which that would hinder the ability of a fire engine to exit the cul-de-sac bulb. We have taken fire engines out in the past and, and tried to see, could we get a, in a case exactly like this, not on this street, though. Then down on Meadow Circle, if you could scroll down, Cindy, there are two spaces. This one, you probably couldn't get a typical passenger vehicle, but a smart car or a motorcycle could potentially park. But those are the three spaces we're talking about, that currently you could park in theory, and some, as you can see on the aerial image, some people have been parking on them. Everything else on the street would remain as is.
Clayton, I'm confused. I thought that per our ordinances, you couldn't park in cul-de-sacs anywhere.
That's any street excepted 2006 or later.
It really doesn't, it really doesn't matter if there's a sign saying you can't park in the cul-de-sac. At some point in the near future, we're going to have no parking in cul-de-sacs, regardless of when it was built, is the way I'm understanding our trending thoughts on this, correct?
That, that still requires council action on that, but the committee.
We've been talking about this.
Was it Public Works Committee? Has been talking about it, but no action has been taken to date.
So let's go forward a few years, and with the recognition, recognizing that a fire truck cannot make a full turn exit if there's any vehicles in a cul-de-sac all across Johnston, we are talking about, you know, making sure that regardless of where you live, or when your development was, was built, that the cul-de-sac, you're not supposed to park in it. The police, then, they don't go around looking at these cul-de-sacs and writing tickets. They come out if they're called, is the way I understand. Although, if they drove down there and they had a reason, they could write a ticket once we've made this ordinance citywide. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I defer to the, the police chief on how we go about our practice of enforcing our parking regulations.
I'm not going to say, I will tell you that I live on a cul-de-sac, and in front of my house is one of the very few parking stalls for that cul-de-sac, and that is where my children park all the time. So I 100% understand what you're saying.
Where he's showing Prairie Place here? We go back to Prairie Place. Is this Prairie Place?
Yep.
Here's a stop sign on the corner. Sorry. There's a stop sign on the corner, and we all know you cannot park clear up to a stop sign. So it actually is incorrect? None of that's parkable. So I counted, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, no, I think it was one, two, three, four, five, six. Either way, it was eight when I counted today. And like I said, teenagers bring upon those things. We've never had service guys. I, I work from home. I see it all. We don't have them struggling. I still think this is about one loud neighbor, and that's not fair for 50 others. And I have driven around. I've driven around in my sister's neighborhood, my sister's rich neighborhood in Johnston. You can park on any cul-de-sac, and yet mine here on 62nd is being picked at because of one neighbor. We're all aware.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Sorry, sorry. I just had to correct that, because it was not accurate.
I don't have anything really more to add to this, except that that one parking stall in front of my house is used all the time by my children, by handy, handy workers, whatever, the FedEx. It's always in use. But at some point, I understand that I'll be asked to vote on this, and it'll include my own cul-de-sac in front of my house, and I'm going to accept it, because it's not because I, we're picking on any individual group or area. It's because in the end, we have to think about the safety of everyone.
Excuse me?
And I would just add, I guess, to what council person, Martin, I think the number one issue here is not about a neighbor complaining. That's not the issue. The, the issue is the ability for police and fire vehicles, especially fire vehicles,
to be able to get all the way down into the access to the cul-de-sac. And that's the issue that is being identified here. And I realize you're not accepting that, but that is the issue. That's the driving force in why these types of decisions are being made is, is that, that is, you know, rain, snow, sleet, you have to have access to those, for those fire vehicles, 365 days a year. And you may have never had to have a fire vehicle down your street, and hopefully never have. But whenever you, whenever you have parking in the cul-de-sac that makes it difficult for those vehicles to access, you don't want it to be that time when all of a sudden there's an emergency. So that is the number one driving force. It is not a neighbor complaint, it is not these other factors that were you, and I realize you're not going to accept that, but that is the driving force.
Excuse me. Chief, do you want to, Chief Clark, can you come up and speak to this issue?
Yes, Mayor, we have driven around. There are what they call SUDAS standards, so the State Urban Design Standards, of what the cul-de-sac bulb, how wide street should be, how wide the turning radius for the cul-de-sac should be. And that's what we try to follow. And all of that's based on the science, the turning radius of our largest apparatus. But it's not just that. I think Teresa was talking about trash pickup, or recycling pickup. And again, those are large vehicles, and they need the full width to be able to turn and do that. You know, we also have UPS, and FedEx, and other large delivery trucks. And so they can be impeded if their vehicles park in that. So, again, it's more of a safety factor to make sure that we don't have to, you know, do 3 and 6-point turns to get out, because the backing is when we most likely going to cause accidents. So, that's the reason for the no parking in the bulbs. And as was pointed out, it's been that way since 2006. We're just trying to rectify going back to those streets and those cul-de-sacs that were not under the ordinance prior to that.
Thank you.
Chief, before you wander too far away, Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Chief, do you know offhand, and perhaps Clayton can help, what is the spacing that's needed? I see on one of those at the end, there is a fire hydrant. How much space are we supposed to be giving that?
Ordinance says no parking 5 feet either side of a fire hydrant.
Okay.
That was the dimension I used in making the map.
All right, thank you.
Requirements on both sides of a mailbox as well.
No parking 20 feet either side of a mailbox. I think it's 10 feet to a stop sign within an intersection. We have different standards. And as you can see from the map, the majority of each of these cul-de-sac bulbs is already covered. But there still is a few spaces that could legally be parked today. And that is why you have the ordinance in front of you.
Thank you.
And tell me again, Clayton, all cul-de-sacs on where houses are built, beyond what date there is no parking?
2006.
2006.
Where it would be no parking the north or east side of a street, and within the cul-de-sac bulb. And as we've received complaints or identified streets that have needed rectified, we have brought those before you. We have not got them all. And short of doing a comprehensive look, which we've started with the Public Works Committee, finding it, just do it wholesale, but we have this one in front of you tonight.
So we do appreciate you coming this evening and sharing your comments. And certainly, there'll be another reading of this ordinance. So you're welcome to come back next time and share any comments that you have. But I think what you're hearing from our fire chief and from the city council members is the reason why we're looking at these, the cul-de-sacs and taking the action that we are, and eventually, it will apply to all cul-de-sacs in our community, is the public safety concern. And the primary public safety concern is fire trucks. Again, you know, you can agree or disagree with that. That's the concern that we have, and that's why we're addressing it. I can't hear you.
She's asking if it's houses before 2006.
It will apply across the community.
Can I, can I jump in?
What'd she say?
Hi.
Councilman Evans.
I brought this development up a few months ago. I have a relative that lives in there. And it confused me that on one side of the street, you've got a fire hydrant, so you can't park on that side of the street. And on the other side, you've got mailboxes. So it's sprinkled in where you can and can't park. And it's the same development. And it looks like I'm seeing it happening again on these two streets. Do we have, I mean, why do we have to create a parking hazard or a parking problem on both sides of the street? Whether it's a fire hydrant on one side of the street, you can't park? And then you've got the mailboxes on the other side of the street? Why can't we put the mailboxes and the fire hydrants on the same side of the street? So the other side of the street, you can have parking? Is that one of our codes, or?
2006 or later, we do exactly that. Existing streets, the mailboxes are where they are. Matt, I don't know if you're able to address how we address mailboxes in the public right of way, since that'd be more in your realm, on existing situations.
Not on existing situations, but moving forward, they are having, the post office has used cluster boxes. So you don't have your individual mailboxes in front of the houses anymore.
But are they on the same side as the fire hydrants?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes. We try to do that where we can, same side as the light poles, so that we can try and attach sides of those. We try and open up the parking as much as we can.
So is this something where we could possibly move mailboxes? To open up, we're only losing three spots here, the way I see it. But if we can move a line of mailboxes, we can open up, who knows?
I think that goes to the earlier conversation. I think the residents would have to take that initiative to move their own mailbox and work that through the post office. I know that the city can't just go out and move those mailboxes.
And I don't know, also, if in these streets, if all the fire hydrants are on the same side, right? Because that would be the harder thing to move. If the hydrants are interspersed, then it's kind of, a mailbox moving helps you a little bit. But that is kind of, it's sort of like, it took us into 2006 to kind of figure out the point you just made, that, hey, let's put all this stuff on this, on one side and park on the other. And that's kind of a good improvement for those post-2006 neighborhoods. But we have a lot of community that was built before that, too, so.
In some of these areas, when you go in and you construct that water main, it'll be on one side. And as soon as you turn the street, it's either on that same side, or it's gone across. And depending on where some of the existing infrastructure is. So sometimes it forces us to have to deviate from our normal practice.
Apple's for a while, and there was streets like this with some problems. And what they would do is have a street sign that said, "On odd days, you can park on this side. On even days, you can park on that side, north side, south side, east side, west side." That seemed to work out. Just a suggestion. And another suggestion is to let the good neighbor get a pass on the fine, possibly, now that they know what the rules are. Towing fee? No towing fee? Just a suggestion.
And I guess that would be the other thing I would add. People were raising questions about towing. I don't know that we, we do not tow vehicles for that type of parking. Is that correct? I mean, the police chief is nodding his head. So we're not, we're not, you're not talking about getting a car that would be towed, but you would get a ticket of some sort, correct, Mayor? Correct, police chief?
Yes, sir. So the police department is obviously tasked with the responsibility of enforcement of ordinances for parking. It is primarily a complaint-driven response. We do not typically tow any vehicles for parking violations, absent emergency snow removal or roadway hazards. Beyond that, if it is a vehicle that hasn't moved for a period of 24 hours, then we will tag that vehicle with a bright colored notice. And then it's considered an abandoned vehicle that we would come back and remove it in the next day or two. But when it comes to addressing parking issues in neighborhoods, we try to be sensitive to the neighborhood. Most of our officers, they will go that extra step. They will run the license plate on the vehicle. They will try to figure out if it's a residential street, someone that lives there on the street, try to make contact with them and advise them of the ordinance and moving on. Obviously, visitors, that's a little bit more difficult. But our goal is not to levy unnecessary fines for parking violations. We're certainly not going to be towing vehicles, again, absent a hazard. We understand the nature and the challenges of what we face in parking. We do have a community service officer that works Monday through Friday, what you would call normal business hours, that does a little bit more with targeted enforcement if we have parking issues, say, for example, around the high school, or there's some sort of ongoing issue that we'll take a more proactive stance with that. But by and large, this is a community caretaking issue that we try to address appropriately and not excessively.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on this item? With that, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1089?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Any vote, please?
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. So there will be another reading of this. And if you want to talk to your neighbors, come to the next meeting. Certainly welcome to do that. Thank you. Item 7C. Consider approval of the following items related to PZ case 22-15, the final plat for Ridgedale Heights, plat 4. The subject property is located west of Northwest 100th Street at the intersection with Northwest 68th Avenue. Resolution number 22-301, approving the final plat for Ridgedale Heights, plat 4. Resolution number 22-302. Accepting the public improvements within Ridgedale Heights, plat 4. Clayton?
Ridgedale Land Company has submitted a final plat for the subdivision of 32.16 acres into 39 lots for single-family detached homes, two unbuildable outlots, one public parkland lot, and four public street lots. This property would be the phase that we get the public parkland in the Ridgedale Heights development. Will satisfy a portion of the development agreement regarding parkland dedication. The remainder of the agreement is installation of trails, which occurs with home construction in various portions of the neighborhood. The property, or the project has been constructed with city standards and specifications and the approved construction drawings. Public Works is recommending acceptance of the public improvements. And Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of the final plat. Happy to go into further detail or answer any questions that may arise.
Council, any questions for Clayton?
Mayor, I do. Clayton, you did give indication that this will be the parkland dedication. And I see on the plating that Lot A includes that parkland. But to what extent, or how much percentage is still then assumed to be part of trails?
I report 1.597 acres balance, which is covered by an equal value alternative being trail in lieu of. And they are covering that with individual home constructions.
The way I understand, and what you said, is that actually it's going to be the homeowner's expense?
The home builders.
Home builder will be building that entire trail?
In front of that individual home site.
The entire width of that trail?
That 10-foot width, yes.
Right.
And they're covering the cost difference between, so they would typically be required a five-foot sidewalk. We're only giving them credit for the upsized portion of it.
Thank you. That is the clarification I was looking for there. Now, it's also my understanding, though, that moving forward on our next round of ordinances, because trails are designated as city infrastructure, that will not be able to count as parkland dedication. Is that correct?
That's my recollection.
Okay.
David's given the thumbs up, yes.
I'll be honest with you, this is another extent where ordinances can't come soon enough. I unfortunately have had conversations with other residents within this area that have been concerned that they were surprised by the trails that had to be put in, sacrificing parts of their turf in their front yard. I look forward to that ordinance where we actually can claim trails as part of our city infrastructure. In fact, I'd like to know what options we have at this point to make sure that actually that future ordinance actually gets written into this plat as well. In other words, that they designate that 1.56 and change to be actually be parkland dedication and not count toward the trails.
I don't know if we can go back on it. I'd maybe look to Christine, but we do have an existing agreement with them, development agreement. And it isn't consistent with the approved final or preliminary plat. So I don't know if we can retroactively require them to dedicate the land.
No, based on what we're discussing here, it would be a subdivision code amendment, it sounds like. And that would just be prospective for new plats to come in after the date that that change is implemented.
All right, thank you.
Other council comments or questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-301?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Any vote, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
No.
Coe?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-302?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Any vote, please?
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
No.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D. Consider approval of the following items relating to PZ case 22-22, the final plat for Ridgedale Heights Town Homes, plat 2. The subject property is located south of Northwest 70th Avenue and east of Northwest 106th Street. Resolution number 22-304, approving the final plat for Ridgedale Heights Town Homes, plat 2. Resolutions, resolution number 22-305, accepting a public utility easement within Ridgedale Heights Town Homes, plat 1. Clayton?
Timbercrest Homes LLC has submitted a final plat for the subdivision of 15.477 acres into 112 buildable townhome lots, one common area lot, and one unbuildable outlot. As we previously discussed on the last agenda item, parkland dedication is covered via a development agreement. The park site was dedicated with plat 4, and trails will be constructed with home construction. The property, or the project is being developed in accordance with the approved site plan and preliminary plat. Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval. And staff is recommending acceptance of the public utility easement, which is off-site of the plat. Therefore, it's coming to you as a separate action item, because it's outside the boundaries of the plating action. With that, happy to answer any questions or go into further detail if needed.
Council, any questions?
I kind of have a, I have a question. I don't know if it can be answered at this meeting. Did they provide enough extra parking per our current ordinances? By extra parking, I mean parking for guests beyond what gets parked on the driveways?
Yes, they did provide parking along the southern east-south roadway. There'll be parallel parking along the north side of the roadway in dedicated parking spaces in accordance with current city codes. and dedicated parking spaces in accordance with current city code standards.
Is there a, and again, I'm putting you on the spot and if you need to tell me later, I'd like to know. It seems like these dead-end streets are quite long and the provided guest parking is at the south end, which is quite a bit, quite a bit of distance away. Do we have a, is part of our ordinances currently the provided guest parking has to be within so many feet of 75% of units? Or how is that done?
Currently, city code does not address proximity of guest parking to unit. New city code will.
All right, thank you.
So Clayton, it does, so these streets, they do disappear to dead end as opposed to like cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Is there a reason that they don't? I mean, if you drive all the way down to the end, do you have to pull into somebody's driveway to turn around?
I'm going to come over to the map to help you. It doesn't show on this image very well. Actually, the aerial image might be a good one, Cindy. As you can see on the two existing, they have a dedicated turnaround at the end of them, which is in accordance with fire code or fire apparatus turnaround.
And that's basically-
It's an alternative to a cul-de-sac bowl. It's an acceptable alternative.
The two existing, so you're saying that these are replicating what's on the existing?
Yes, they'll just be essentially copy paste.
I couldn't see what you're- I don't see that on there.
You have to look at this one.
This is the engineer exhibit that accompanies the final plat.
Okay.
Again, showing the-
Oh, okay. The, that's the turnaround, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's the, okay, that's what you were highlighting on the other, on the-
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a better image.
So that's what that, that, it looks like between 30 and 31, there's actually a street. Okay, that helps, that helps.
Yeah, and those would be designated no parking because they're fire, fire lanes, turnarounds.
Thanks.
Other questions for Clayton? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-304?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-305?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E. Consider second reading of ordinance number 1088, amending ordinances number, numbers 886 and 984, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on a portion of the property located within the West Central Urban Renewal Area in the City of Johnson, County of Polk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Johnson, County of Polk, Johnson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued to, issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the West Central Urban Renewal Area, removing a portion of the Amendment Number One Subarea from the Division of Revenue and adding the commercial portion of the Amendment Number Two Subarea to the Division of Revenue. That's a mouthful. Adam?
No changes to the ordinance and there's been no public comment.
Council, have any questions for Adam?
Any concern with waiving a third reading at tonight's meeting?
Really enjoy hearing the mayor read it, so I'd request that we give her the opportunity one more time.
No objections, all right.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1088?
I move.
I move.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I'll make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance 1088 and to adopt and publish.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7F. Consider a motion to remove the item from the table and consider resolution number 22-293, approving the preliminary plat for Carmel Hyperion, a proposed 27-lot subdivision east of Northwest Beaver Drive adjacent to the Hyperion Field, Field Club Driving Range. Aaron?
I ask you to forgive me in advance. I rely pretty heavily on my notes and forgot my glasses tonight. So this might be a little bit of a struggle. But Carmel Hyperion is a proposed 27-lot residential subdivision adjacent to the Hyperion Field Club Driving Range. It's on the east side of Northwest Beaver Drive. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the preliminary plat on October 31st and they made a motion to recommend approval subject to conditions, but that motion ultimately failed by a vote of two yes to three no votes. Five members of the seven-member commission were present for that meeting. Procedurally, a failed motion to recommend approval should be interpreted by the council as a recommendation to deny the preliminary plat. But ultimately, the planning commission is a recommending body and this council can choose to uphold that recommendation or come to a different conclusion entirely. This item was on the council agenda two weeks ago and we were here in those, in these chambers late into the evening, debating the merits of this project and hearing public comment. And the council did ultimately table this item with direction to the developer to meet with neighboring property owners to hear their concerns and further discuss this proposal. And in the ensuing weeks, the developer has made themselves available to meet with neighboring property owners both individually and also collectively. They did so collectively here at a meeting at City Hall last Thursday. I do think those discussions have been fairly well received. I was at the meeting last Thursday. I can attest the discussion was very civil. It was informative. Ultimately, no changes have been made to the plat, but I do think it was a good opportunity for both sides to better understand their differing perspectives, which I believe is exactly what the council was seeking by tabling the item. Because we already went into great detail on the specifics of this project in the last council meeting, I won't give my usual overview, but I will address a few items that have come up since your last council meeting. Last week and again today, there was public comment received suggesting that the council should consider imposing a condition of approval on this plat, requiring the developer to engage in a study to determine if there are prehistoric burial grounds on the property. I do want to clarify, there are no known burial grounds on the property and a requirement to undergo such a study is not something required anywhere in our code of ordinances. And the state code doesn't require such a study for a private subdivision either. It's also something we have not required of any other development in the city previously, including when the surrounding properties were developed. But I do want to point out that the Code of Iowa does have multiple sections that allow for the preservation of burial grounds if they are discovered during construction. And the Code of Iowa stipulates any person discovering human remains must notify the county or state medical examiner or a law enforcement agency as soon as is reasonably possible. And if that entity has reason to believe the remains are over 150 years old, they in turn have a responsibility to notify the state archaeologist. These are penalties written into the code for failing to do so. There are penalties written into the code for failing to do so. And there are also penalties for intentionally disturbing that grave site further if one is found. So there are existing state code requirements in place that are intended to prevent disruption of ancient burial grounds if any are to be found. But again, I want to reiterate, there are no known burial grounds on the site. There were also concerns related to the traffic safety in public comment received today. The comment stated it would be unsafe for traffic to exit from the subdivision onto Northwest Beaver Drive and questioned if traffic safety has been part of the review process. All plats and middles are subject to review not only by our planning staff, but our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, and also our consulting engineer. And comments from the city's consulting engineer related to placement and geometry of the intersection of 1900 Drive with Northwest Beaver Drive have been incorporated into subsequent revisions of the plat expressly to address traffic safety. In addition to placement of the access, our consulting engineer looks at traffic speed and visibility on Northwest Beaver Drive. So traffic safety is certainly something that gets looked at and considered as part of the review process. Lastly, I wanted to discuss the appropriate process for subdivisions or the approval process for subdivisions. Just to provide some clarity, obviously, the council is well familiar with the plating process as you frequently consider approval of subdivisions all over town, but the public might not be as familiar with the process. What you're considering tonight is a preliminary plat. This is the first of a three-step process before a lot can be officially created and constructed upon. Their preliminary plat irons out many of the broad details of a subdivision and is a process that is often heavily conditioned, as is this one. After preliminary plat approval, the developer must submit construction drawings for public improvements. Public improvements include grow construction and utilities. Once all the public improvements have been constructed and accepted by the city, a final plat is presented to the city council for approval. So there are many steps that occur between approval of a preliminary plat and actual home construction. With that, if you have any questions for me, I can answer those now. Otherwise, I'm happy to turn the microphone over to the developer if you should have any questions for them.
Council, have any questions for Aaron?
Yeah, I do. Aaron, can you explain to me about what the traffic study was done?
There's not a traffic study and there's not a requirement to do a traffic study. But certainly, they look at traffic conditions when a new subdivision is proposed and they will look for safety issues. And if there are any present, then they'll ask for revisions to the plat. And so, you know, with the initial submittal, there was some adjustment that needed to be made with the angle that 1900 Drive intersects with Northwest Beaver Drive. And the subsequent revisions did address that. Essentially, the revisions were necessary to accommodate prints and eliminate conflicting traffic movements as traffic exits out onto Northwest Beaver Drive. So no traffic analysis was conducted. There's no traffic analysis that's required by code. There are for if, if there's a rezoning, that results in substantially more homes. I believe it's 50 homes, as it's written in the code. That's the point at which we would conduct a traffic study, but this is a 27-lot subdivision and doesn't rise to that level of needing to have a traffic study conducted.
Before we ask any more questions, we need to take the procedural action to remove the item from the table.
Do I need to do all that over again?
No, no. But let's do that, let's do that now. Do we have a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, Aaron, pick up where you left off.
Yeah, I think I had concluded my answer to that question. Were there further questions on that regard?
Yeah, I do. So explain to me the, I don't have the whole map up here, but I'm trying to imagine this. So we were, not just we were higher up and this plot is a little bit down. Is that right? They need to go up to join the Beaver, Northwest Beaver?
I think you're talking about the roadway elevation and you're asking if there's a climb to exit out onto Northwest Beaver. I would defer to the applicant's engineer on that one because they, he probably has a better grasp of the top of graphical conditions out there. I will say, I was looking at the maps a little more closely today. And here's 1900 Drive. This is where the subdivision exits out, exits out onto Northwest Beaver. Of course, as I was stating earlier, there were some adjustments that had to be made with the angle of 1900 Drive and there will also be some improvements made to the Hyperion access here. Again, just to make sure that these two entrances align and to prevent conflicting traffic movements. But I do know Northwest Beaver, there's a steady climb up to, it crests about here at, gosh, I forget the name of the cemetery. Can somebody help me out with that? Ridgedale. It does crest, Northwest Beaver crests about this location. And so I think there were some concerns about visibility for vehicles that are traveling on Northwest Beaver Drive and if they'll be able to slow down and stop in a sufficient amount of time as vehicles exit onto Northwest Beaver Drive, you know, given, given the fact that it's a little bit lower here and by the time you get to that crest, is there sufficient distance here? And it appears as if there is, there's, I had some notes here. It's a major, Northwest Beaver is a major collector. Speed limit's 35 miles an hour. A vehicle traveling 35 miles an hour needs approximately 140 feet of pavement to come to a safe stop. At that point where it crests by the Ridgedale Cemetery, there's approximately 350 feet plus from that crest to the Gulf Cart Tunnel under Northwest Beaver Drive. So what I'm getting at is there's more than twice the distance required to make a safe stop when somebody crests that hill. They've got sufficient sight distance to come to a complete stop. There's, there's more than two times the distance needed for them to come to a complete stop. So these things have been looked at and taken into consideration.
Now, I just realized that, that, that 1900, that road is in sync with the Hyperion Point, Gulf thing. The whole road is continues to that, right?
You're going to have to ask to say that one more time for me.
Okay. I'm trying to imagine this, so I don't have, let me try this. This is the Hyperion Point?
Yes.
And that is 1900 Point Road?
1900 Drive, yes.
Right, okay. So they are, they're in sync to each other. That means traffic on both sides of the road.
That's it will be aligned. Certainly, there is reconstruction of the Hyperion access that's necessary in order to, for these two entrances to completely align. And that's one of the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Sure, I understand that, I understand. They're aligned to each other. What I'm trying to get is there's a traffic on the Hyperion Court. It's the Hyperion Gulf thing. And now this 1900 traffic, this 27 homes. Both sides of the road, there are traffic coming into Northwest Beaver, is that right?
Yes.
And could that be a problem with traffic then?
And that's part of the reason why we requested that they realign that entrance because if the two entrances are offset, it can be a traffic issue. There would be conflicting traffic movement. So that's one of the reasons. But if you're talking purely in terms of volume, no, it's, it's, volume is not an issue for the, for that roadway.
Okay, so do you have information about how much the volume on this, on this Hyperion Gulf and traffic on the 1900?
Well, we, again, we didn't require a traffic study just because it doesn't rise to that level where one would be required. Northwest Beaver Drive is a major collector, which means it's designed to handle a heavier load of traffic. So these 27 additional homes shouldn't present an issue. Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, but common sense tells me that there'll be more traffic coming on either side of that and that would cause an issue because there's both traffic coming on both sides of the road, joining into Northwest Beaver. And if there's a big event happening up at the Gulf even, Gulf Center, the Hyperion, more traffic will flow from there into that and this traffic coming on that. I think there'll be a major traffic issue at that point in time.
I understand that's a concern of yours.
It's my concern, I think it will happen, so you need to address that.
So Aaron, at what point do we require? How large a subdivision does it have to be?
And really, it doesn't, I don't think there's a requirement based off of just the size of a subdivision, but when we encounter a rezoning, help me out here, David. Maybe you pulled up the code language and you can quote it verbatim for us. I want to say it's 50 homes.
That's what's sort of my recall too. If it was 50 or more, then you have to do some sort of traffic analysis. But this is half of that, so.
Yeah. We can circle back and David can elaborate on that answer. Other questions while he's looking that information up?
I have, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just, for my curiosity, I know we've done developments up and down the river, lake, the fingers, the drain into the basin, whatever. Have we ever in the past come across any other burial grounds of any kind?
I'm not aware of any. I think I've been here approximately 15 years and not to my knowledge, David's been here longer. David shaking his head no. David shaking his head no.
Thanks.
And I think at some point when we transitioned to the developer, they had some conversations, they've started those conversations with the Army Corps to start that process, so whenever that's appropriate for them to comment on it.
Councilman Martin?
Thank you. Aaron, along Beaver Drive, our trail that is on the north and on the east side of Beaver Drive, I see that there's going to be a portion of the median protecting the walkers from the drive lane. It's going to be removed. Is there going to be a portion of median put back in on the south side? Or do you think that that gap, that we don't need that to protect, protect the people on the trail?
You're right. I think, I don't know which page it's on on the preliminary plat.
It's in one of the plats, and I can't tell you which exhibit it was. Might have been one of the first two.
And that's because, you know, obviously, there is an existing entrance here now for the driving range, but it'll have to be reconfigured and widened for 1900 Drive. Yeah, I think that's the location there. So what Councilmember Martin is referring to is that there's a median that separates the drive aisle of Northwest Beaver Drive from the pedestrian and bike trail, and that's there for safety of the persons using the bike trail. And a portion of that median will have to be removed because it would otherwise stick out in front of 1900 Drive. And I think that's, what does it say there? It says relocate median south of here.
Oh, it does say that. Okay, good. All right, that is good to hear. My other comment then is, there was quite a bit of discussion about the streetlights being proposed and that there was going to be two different types. One type for the first one-half of the road coming in, and then as it got into the cul-de-sac areas, they were going to transition to a different type of fixture. Has that been, has the city taken a look at those fixtures and made recommendations they feel good about?
As is written in your staff report, there's a condition that addresses it, and it says, it's condition number seven, I believe, and it says, "Council acceptance of the proposed Crest Hill Glass Series Street Lamp from Lot 23 eastward throughout the subdivision, provided the developer can verify this fixture would meet the roadway lighting requirements and provide evidence that staggering..." They want to place these decorative fixtures on both sides of the road, where typically we have streetlights only on one side of the road. The issue is, if they stagger them on both sides of the road, will it result in more fixtures than would otherwise be required? And if the city is responsible for, you know, those fixtures, we don't want to incur additional costs, maintenance costs. So the condition is worded, "Provide evidence that staggering fixtures on both sides does not result in the need for more streetlights than the more traditional downcast fixture otherwise would, and that downcast fixtures would be installed on the north side of 1900 Drive from Northwest Beaver Drive to the start of Lot 23." And generally, that portion up to Lot 23 would utilize a more standard street lamp, and part of the reasoning was because initially, there were some concerns on behalf of the adjacent residents that the decorative street lamp would result in trespass lighting on their homes or their properties. Since that time, I've actually had a phone call from some of the area, some of the north adjacent residents who stated that, in retrospect, they would rather see the decorative street lamp because it's a shorter fixture, and they would rather see that street lamp used throughout the entirety of the subdivision. Typically, this is something that we would approve. Street lighting plan would be considered with construction drawings. So it's kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse. I just, I think that the Dentons wanted to address the street lighting issue up front because they wanted to know that they would be able to use their decorative lighting fixture. I think ultimately, more recently, they've asked if the city would allow them to utilize the decorative lamp throughout the entirety of the subdivision if they were to be a private street lighting system where the city wasn't responsible for metering and maintenance of those fixtures. Again, we're kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse by, because that's really something we would look at at a later date. But the way that it's worded in your staff report today is that the more traditional street lamp would be used on one side of the roadway up to Lot 23 with the decorative lamps used throughout the rest of the subdivision, provided they can show that it won't increase maintenance costs to the city. So this is something that potentially we could kick down the road to construction drawing approval, if you wanted to do so. If you want to take up the issue tonight, we can. But I think there was probably some bigger issues that needed to get ironed out tonight.
So I am comfortable with however you, as staff, is going to recommend to the council. If you want to have us take it off of this, I'd be willing to make that motion. My concern is the same as the neighbors. I don't want to see a lot of light pollution beyond the boundary line. I'm concerned about light pollution. I'm concerned about attracting birds, migrating birds, whatever. And I want the best recommendation the staff has. So if you think that it's appropriate that these discussions be left at the appropriate time, I'm happy with that. I would like to hear if the other council members agree. So, and that's my, that's my end of my questions.
And it's probably something that I would defer to the Dentons as well, that let them address the issue as well.
Other questions for Aaron?
Mayor, I have a couple. Aaron, can you first just clarify for me, the, in lieu of Parkland dedication, the developer is proposing a full cash payout on that. There's none of the outlots that are being designated as, is partial Parkland dedication.
That's right.
Okay. The second thing, just to make sure that we're clear on this, I know I had alluded at our previous meeting that I was eager to get our new round of ordinances in place. However, I think that, to some extent, I wasn't clear on really what that entailed and why that may be the case. To the best of your knowledge, can you explain how the soil testing or requirements with regard to geotechnical surveying that we would be requiring in this proposal would actually be different or would be the same as when we adopt or if we adopt our future city ordinance?
I believe the wording is actually the same that we are considering adopting with our future ordinance, because I modeled that condition after some wording that was provided to me by Clayton Endor, and he's the one who developed that wording for our new ordinance. David, correct me if I'm wrong on that, same wording. And let me find that condition for you, and I'll read it verbatim. It's condition number 11 in your resolution. "A slope stability analysis must accompany any building permit application for any structure to be built on 14% or greater slope to identify areas of slope instability and specify any necessary engineering practices to protect property, prevent erosion, and protect general health and welfare of the residents." So that's the same code language that we're looking to adopt with our updated zoning ordinance.
Is it safe to then to say that, in essence, the rigor that's expected of these developers now, and if this were approved in the future, would be the same then with regard to that geotechnical survey? Okay. The last thing, more generally, is with regard to the legality of what we can do, and perhaps this may need to be deferred to Christine, to some extent, what in our current ordinances do we have to even reject a plat at this point in time?
In my opinion, if they've, if the applicant has submitted a plat that complies with all the city's ordinances, you would be stepping into tricky ground if you were to deny it. You'd have to have a basis for denying approval of the plat based on some code issue. That's my opinion. But I'm not paid to really offer those types of opinions.
Or trained, really.
Or trained, that's more appropriate.
And I will admit, Aaron, you're doing a great job for not having your glasses. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know.
Unfortunately, they don't make me any smarter. They just...
You're smart enough. No, Aaron, I appreciate you letting me put you on the spot. Christine, if you'd like to weigh in, and then I'll have one more remark.
Yeah, I agree very much with Aaron's comments. I mean, the code, Iowa code, does say that a local governing body, when reviewing a plat, has to consider its adopted codes and ordinances, and if the plat does meet those codes and ordinances, it should be approved. If you do deny a plat application, you are required, in your decision, to state where the deficiencies are with the plat, and the developer has the opportunity to appeal that decision further if they disagree with it. With that being said, there is case law that says that cities do have some flexibility, particularly when it comes to life safety type things. So if the traffic, you know, volume or layout is really determined to be, you know, just not safe for that particular location, and the council articulates that, I mean, those types of decisions have been upheld, even if it's not, you know, verbatim what's in your code. But to the extent, you know, you look at the code requirements, you look at the plat, if it's consistent with the code, my recommendation would be to approve the plat.
Thanks, Christine. And thank you, Aaron, as well. My last general sentiment is from the standpoint of, I echo Councilmember Martin's response with regard to the light fixtures themselves. If staff feels that it's most beneficial to delay that portion of the decision so that we can better address and get better fact-finding at that building or construction permitting perspective, I definitely would support an amendment to that. With that, I yield.
Any other questions for Aaron?
I might look back to David and see if he found that language in the ordinance.
Site plan requirement, which this type of development wouldn't require a site plan, but the site plan requirement is 80 dwelling units or 1,000 average daily trips. And on a single-family house, our normal rule of thumb is 10 trips per day per house, so you'd be only looking at 270 trips from development to site.
And that's, that's what triggers the traffic study?
Correct.
1,000 trips, David?
1,000 trips or 80 dwelling units.
This is 270 daily trips versus the 1,000?
If there's no other questions from the council, do the applicants want to make
Talk into it right this time. Thank you for your time, and just a lot of conversation. We appreciate being able to go back with the neighbors and really dig into their concerns and really understand their perspective, which allowed us some good conversation, especially the folks to the north, as they will have the greatest impact from, from the streetlights, excuse me, the traffic lights. So I feel like we've made some really good headway there. I know there's been a lot of conversation back and forth. I think Aaron really kind of doing the job here. I was going to kind of come up and state a lot of those facts, but I guess with us being up here, do you folks have any questions directly of us?
I have just a couple of quick questions. So first off, there was the question about human remains, and I think you've had some conversations with the Army Corps. Could you just walk through, maybe, I don't know, Mark or somebody, to what extent you already kind of initiated those conversations with the Army Corps regarding that issue?
No, no. Corps of Engineers, we've applied, initially, you apply for what they call jurisdictional determination, where they basically just decide whether they want to deal with it or just let the city deal with it. And they've given us preliminary indication that they are going to permit this, they'll be in charge of that. So as part of preparing for that, going down that road, we're undertaking a wetlands delineation study, which they require. And once we get that, then we'll go into the process of applying for what they call a regional general permit, which includes sending them all the, all the plans and giving them detailed, details on everything that we plan to do. And then, in that, at that time, and we verified this, two separate phone calls, because we wanted to make sure we were speaking directly to this, they will have the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will look at endangered species, and they'll have the historical archaeologists, the historic preservation office, or tribal historic preservation office, is the language that they use. Refer to those people and ask, to see if they have any concerns.
So the condition that's in the staff report, the resolution that requires the Army Corps approval encompasses not just the flooding issue, or not flooding, but the wetlands, but also historical preservation, but, and also endangered species.
It triggers that, yes.
Triggers all that. So that's kind of a comprehensive view of that.
Yep.
Perfect, okay. And then just one last question, I've got two, is we've talked about, I think, and you mentioned this at the public meeting, community meeting, neighborhood meeting Thursday, the development, as it goes kind of along the south end, so around Lots 7, 8, or 9. Are you guys, you mentioned, I think you've incorporated some infrastructure there to help make sure that water or stormwater doesn't flow south from those lots into the Hyperion Point residents, and instead will kind of flow back to the north and east. Could you just talk a little bit about that, Mark?
Sure. Yeah, right, right now, the water currently drains that way, and there's been some concerns raised by the neighbors to the south that their, when their property was developed, there should have been some other action taken. So for our buildings, for our project, we'll be, we'll be basically grading a swell along, along the south sides of Lots 7, 8, and 9, and that will intercept, intercept the runoff that, that comes from those lots, and then we'll, we'll route it along, going north along Number 8, north along the east side of Number 9 and 10 up into that detention base, and it's on, on Number 11. So the water that's currently coming off and potentially causing those problems, that will be diverted up to our detention base.
Because your development, those lots on 7, 8, 9, or so, that part of it is 5, 10, 15 feet higher than those homes that are on Hyperion Point, right? And so, and so today, the water, because there's no infrastructure keeping it, it just, it flows, it flows downhill, right?
Right.
So obviously, by having that swell, that should help keep water that today would be running onto their property and help direct it instead into your...
Oh, it will, yes, absolutely.
That's all the questions I have.
Council have other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience would like to address the council on this side?
Christine, are you aware that the Army Corps...
If you could stand behind the podium.
For both mics?
And state your name. And address.
Eric Moore, 6151 Country Ridge Lane. Do I have to stand right here?
Yes, please.
I can't move around, everyone else does.
Well, if you could stand behind the podium.
Christine, are you aware that the Army Corps of Engineers Federal Office from Rock Island says that this forest needs a permit? And it does not have a permit. And if they work on this without the permit, it could be in violation of the Clean Water Act.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
Yes.
If you could make your comments with your questions included, and then...
Questions.
To the extent that you have questions, we'll respond to that after you've taken your seat.
I have lots of questions I'd like to have.
This is not an opportunity to debate with anyone at the podium, at the...
Well, I'm not debating, I just, I'd just like to ask questions and then have, you were doing that with...
That's not the structure, that's not the structure of this...
That's not fair, because you were doing that with other people. Why can't I do that?
If you could just state your comments and your questions, we'll respond to your questions.
My question is, why can't I do what other people have done here tonight?
I'm not certain I know what you're referring to, but if you could...
I'd like to ask a question, get a response, and then ask a question, get a response.
I preside over this meeting, and I would ask you to respect the fact that we have, we have a process here. And what I'm telling you is that when someone from the audience comes to the podium, they state their comments, any questions that they have, and then they take their seat, that's the way that's supposed to be done. Now, I'm not saying that everybody follows the process the right way. That gentleman is our staff. That gentleman is our staff, and he responds to our questions.
The lawyer for Hyperion is your staff?
Do you have comments and questions for us?
My question is, is the lawyer for the Hyperion your staff?
I'm sorry?
This gentleman, I'm sorry, he's not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer either. Is this?
He's not a lawyer.
He's representing.
Do you have questions and comments for us?
The question I had for Christine, yes. Okay, I've got more questions. I'll just try to list them off then. If you refuse to answer questions and then let me answer or ask questions, you won't let me do that. So I'm going to ask.
I'm having a difficult time hearing tonight, so you're going to have to speak clearly.
I'm sorry. I wish I had a better speaking voice. How's this? Can you hear me?
That works, thank you.
Okay. So did you hear my question about the Army Corps Federal Office in Rock Island?
Is that your question?
That's, okay, I'll continue on.
Do you?
The other question is, are you aware of the LiDAR project in Iowa? The LiDAR Iowa project, are you aware of that?
Do you have?
My next question is, are you aware that a state archaeologist at the University of Iowa spotted a Native American mound in the forest and would like to personally go in there and test it, and has been denied? Are you aware of that? Are you aware that when you don't have a permit from the Army Corps and work happens, you could be sued and you will get in trouble with the Clean Water Act and possibly desecration of Native American mounds? The Iowa State's project of LiDAR is a laser that does extreme detailed analysis of land. And the architect, or excuse me, the archaeologist at the University of Iowa spotted a Native American mound and would like to go onto the property and test it. If she can do that, she can stop potentially having a bulldozer come in and run through there and then having them call and say, oh yeah, hey, guess what, we did find human remains. All she needs to do is come in there and do a test. Are you aware of that? Are you aware of the Army Corps of Engineers Federal Office needs to grant a permit to this property? And they have not granted a permit to this property. Clean Water Act, Native American mound, those are my questions.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make comments or questions?
Good evening. Zach Carlton. I live at 6260 Oakwood Hills Drive. Just one real quick question. I know there's 34 planned conifers trees, and my question is, who will be responsible for taking care of those and for how long?
Eric Walter, 7341 Hyperion Point and 7351 Hyperion Point. First and foremost, I want to comment on Councilmember Tom Copes' comments last week or last meeting, just about the engineer. As an engineer, professional engineer myself, I appreciate you recognizing that ideally an engineer comes in and fixes problems, not makes them worse when it comes to water. I would like to comment on the poor communication. I commented last time, too, and it's only continued from then. My name is on the front page of the plans, my address is clearly there, and I had no communication about the meeting on Thursday night, other than we met as neighborhoods, the two neighborhoods, the north and south, met together on Wednesday night to kind of get together and see how things were going to go before the Thursday's meeting. And at that point, many of the other neighbors in Hyperion Point noted that they also did not receive notification of the meeting. The only way we found out is from our other neighbors getting together. The lights, I don't know if we're going to talk about that tonight or not anymore. To me, that's a big deal right now. I look outside my living room window and I see nothing. It's black, it's great, I see the stars. And once this development is built, if it gets built, all I see is the back of houses and streetlights. A little bit disappointing as far as the use of those decorative lights. I've been around in Johnston long enough to see the light pollution, noted it tonight, too, driving out by the dam. You can see the greenhouses from out there. Pretty unfortunate, but it's part of living here. They were here before I was, so kind of comes with the territory. I did do a little bit of research. I don't think there's any ordinances regarding streetlights, other than the light can't trespass on neighboring properties. So there are recommendations on design, though, as recently as 2020 was the document I found about recommending the downlights instead of the uplights. So I would advise that that be looked into. I don't know if there's anything we can do or you guys can do as a city stipulate that. Questions I have would be, I think last meeting, Councilmember Evans, you brought up that we didn't know, it's not clear seemingly why the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't approve. And I know that their recommendation is only a guidance for the council, but I don't know if that's been provided yet. I was reading through the minutes, they canceled their meeting, I think, last week, and so I don't know if there's more information out there on the reasoning behind that. We talked about the 50 homes or 1,000 trips. Just want to note that ordinance considers proximity to adjacent subdivisions. And the sidewalk, you brought up a good point on that one. I walk that daily with my kids. I don't know if anyone else has seen cars actually driving on that sidewalk, but it's pretty scary when you're out there at night and you see a car driving on that. So maybe unrelated to this, but future comment would be looking at if we could put barriers on there to at least prevent cars from driving up there. So it's pretty easy to miss that median when you're turning left on the beaver, not really a well-lit area at night. And plus, beavers are heavily trafficked area, trying, people going north, certainly on a Saturday night, maybe not the best thing. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Gorley, and I live at 7331 Hyperion Point.
If you could speak a little closer.
Better? I told you at the last meeting that I'm a professional archaeologist, but I didn't give you any of my background in terms of what kind of work I engaged in as a professional archaeologist. But I spent about 10 years as a review and compliance archaeologist for the State Historic Preservation Office. And so that work involved reviewing federally funded projects, federally funded, permitted, or licensed projects, to see what effect that they might have, and then consulting with the federal agencies on their projects. That review process is called Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And there is also within the National Historic Preservation Act is Section 110K, which is about anticipatory demolition. And that says that an applicant for a federal permit, et cetera, cannot delay getting their permit, go out, do the project, and then say, after the site is destroyed, say they're sorry. We try very hard to avoid, we try to preserve sites, but obviously, it's an administrative process, and so the timing is very important on these projects. In addition to the federal National Historic Preservation Act, there is a state law, Iowa was the first state in the nation to have a law that protects ancient burials, and that's in Iowa Code 263B. And I'll just read it to you. The State Archaeologist has the primary responsibility for investigating, preserving, and re-incurring discoveries of ancient human remains. For the purposes of this section, ancient human remains are those remains found within the state which are more than 150 years old. State archaeologist shall make arrangements for the services of a forensic osteologist in studying and interpreting ancient burials, and may designate other qualified archaeologists to assist the State Archaeologist in recovering physical and cultural information about the ancient burials. The State Archaeologist shall file with the Iowa Department of Public Health a written report containing both physical and cultural information regarding the remains at the conclusion of each investigation. So when they are notified that there is a, when they are notified that there is a likely burial, then they can come out, but they can't just, they have to have some reasoning to go out. So when I first saw this project, I notified the Corps of Engineers because we routinely worked with them in terms of when an applicant receives a Corps permit. And Mr. McMurphy said the other day at the neighborhood meeting that was held on Thursday that they have already spoken with the Corps of Engineers, which I very much appreciate, and that they have submitted their request for a jurisdictional determination. I told Mr. McMurphy that I would follow up with the archaeologist at the Corps, just to make sure that the two staff members are communicating. I did that on Friday, and he said that the person that Mr. McMurphy had been speaking with didn't work on Fridays, but he would reach out to her on Monday. And as of this point, I haven't heard back, but that would be fast action for any bureaucrat. So if you get a jurisdictional determination, that will outline the area that the Corps will consider when they're issuing their permit. So it's important that the jurisdictional determination get done before ground disturbance occurs, because we don't want to have a case where there might have been something there, but we don't know. I also have reached out to Laura Naldner, who is the Bioarchaeology Director at the State Archaeologists of Iowa. That's at the University of Iowa and is who Eric Moore referenced. She looked at the LiDAR maps and did see something which, I'm sorry, first I should say that a LiDAR map shows very small changes in elevation. So it's, you can see little bumps in the ground and try to figure out what those are. There was one location that she thought had a high potential to be possibly a burial. And she sent, she sent an email, which I did not see, she sent it at almost 4:00 this afternoon, and she was writing to several people and said, thanks all for your efforts on this. As you likely already heard from resident Eric Moore, there is a possible mound that shows up pretty clearly on LiDAR in the shallow creek bed there, and it's near a spring, so definitely some added potential for burials, too. Just let me know if I can be of assistance in at least a preliminary no-cost assessment of the mound. Not sure if the ground is too frozen already out there, though. And then she heard back from another archaeologist that he thought, yes. So I didn't see this till 4:00. I don't know. Eric suggested that her offer to do that had been refused, but I don't know that that's the case. I don't know that anything other than this email came. Oh, I also wanted to read you, I spoke to a retired archaeologist whose name is Joe Arts, and he is a geomorphologist. So he's an expert in soils and looking at landscapes. And he wrote, plenty of long ridge spurs that are sufficiently level and wide for prehistoric sites. In the northwest corner of the development area, the small tributary valley has some well-defined terraces on the valley floor that would have geological potential for surface or buried sites. And then I also had an email from the State Archaeologist. Laura Naldner is the Bioarchaeology Director, but she reports to the State Archaeologist. And he wrote, thanks Kathy, and certainly my office agrees to the high potential character of the area and strongly encourages that field studies that adhere to the Association of Iowa Archaeologists guidelines be undertaken. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Evans, you asked if any mounds had been found, and to my knowledge, there have not been projects that Johnston has done that have found mounds. That doesn't mean that there aren't mounds in Johnston. There are some fairly prominent mounds on the east side of the Des Moines River Valley, so, you know, sort of essentially across from this area. I don't have the map, but if you look at a statewide map of where prehistoric sites are located, they are on the high points and terraces along major streams. So I feel like we have a little bit of a timing issue in that if the preliminary plat is approved before the archaeological and the endangered species and the other things that the Corps will oversee, if those happen and there ends up being ground disturbance before the studies are done, then we have lost part of Johnston's history, and it can't be retrieved. So I guess I would urge caution. I think the developers have done a smart thing by asking proactively for a jurisdictional determination so that we all know exactly what part will be a federal project. But we don't have that today. I was going to, you had to leave for a moment, but I was wanting to read an email that I received from Laura Naldner today. She's in charge of human burials for the State Archaeologists of Iowa. She said, thanks all for your efforts on this. As you've likely already heard from resident Eric Moore, there is a possible mound that shows up pretty clearly on LiDAR in the shallow creek bed, in the shallow creek bed there, and it's near a spring, so definitely some added potential for burials, too. Just let me know if I can be of assistance in at least a preliminary no-cost assessment of the mound. Not sure if the ground is too frozen already out there, though. And then she did have a response from an archaeologist that's here in central Iowa, and he said, right now, it's not too frozen. Another month, it might, probably will be. And so she wouldn't be able to do any sort of assessment until the spring at that point. Nope, I guess that's my comments. Papers all over everything.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
My name's Chris Gorley. I live at 7331 Hyperion Point. I would like to.
I would like to encourage that a dialogue remains open even after if this plat gets approved, that there's some items here that I would like to be notified what might be happening in those regards. It says here that prior to any ground disturbing activity on the site, a stormwater resolution pollution prevention plan has to be conducted by the Iowa DNR, and the city grading permit is required. When I first read that, I was pretty excited because it seemed like there was actually going to be some work done. I'd like to make -- I'd like to know, is that priority even grading the roads and that sort of thing, or is it just when lot developments are going on? Which is, and I was glad to see that there was a slope stability analysis that must be conducted before any building on any lots, but I'd like to know if it's determined soil is over 14% or the slope's over 14%, and what exactly does that mean? Does it mean that there have to be footings that are driven down, you know, 10 feet instead of below the cross line instead of six feet? It doesn't necessarily seem like it makes it so that that parcel of land can't be built on. So, that's one of my questions as to what exactly happens when a slope survey comes back in a negative result. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Adam? Or Aaron?
So, there's several comments about burial grounds, and, you know, several different names were dropped and agencies, state agencies, and this, that, and the other, and I haven't received any communications from any of those persons, so I can't verify any of the -- any of what was said there. I do know, you know, Section 106 of the Historic Preservation Act is regarding federally-funded projects. This isn't a federally-funded project. It's a private subdivision on private property. There's no activities that are occurring on Army Corps property. They do need permission from the Army Corps to dam waters of the state. And so, you know, those blue detention ponds that you see on the drawing up there, those are the result of damming existing streams to retain storm water. And the Army Corps considers those streams to be waters of the state or waters of the United States. And so, they -- the applicant needs to get their permission to construct those dams. Now, you know, are there federal funds involved in this project? No. You know, is this project occurring on federal property? No. But they will have to go through a process with the Army Corps to get approval to construct those dams. And the applicant's engineer talked to you about what that approval process looks like and that they would be doing some cursory reviews with regard to, you know, and he spoke much more intelligently than I could because I haven't had those conversations with the Army Corps, but Mark McMurphy did stand up here and tell you what that process looked like that they're going through with the Army Corps. You know, and I will, I'm gonna say again, I'm not aware of any state code requirement that they conduct a burial ground study prior to doing any type of -- just because somebody makes an assertion that they think there's burial ground there, I don't know that there's any state requirement that says, okay, stop, there must be a study done on this property. Now, if maybe if there was, if this was a state-funded project or a federally-funded project, that might be a different scenario. But this, the code, the section that was referred to earlier, 263B, you know, I read through that code section earlier, and I think from what I heard from the reading earlier here tonight, I don't recall hearing anything in there that said that there had to be a archaeological study conducted on the property for any reason. Certainly, again, I think that it would be new territory for us to require it. It's not a requirement of our code. I don't believe it's a requirement of state code. And I do think there are sufficient mechanisms in place that if there's something is discovered on the site, the state code already addresses how to react to the issue. And of course, you know, on the resolution, resolution we pass for subdivisions, we frequently include multiple conditions of approval, and always the first one is a canned condition for every project. "The project shall be in conformance in accordance with the requirement standards and regulation of the City of Johnston and any other requirement of state or federal law or administrative rule." So, that's already in there saying, hey, if there is a federal law or a state law that supersedes anything, that they're not immune from having to adhere to that law. With regard to, there was a comment about poor communication, no notification about Thursday's meeting. That was really just, you know, from the direction that we were given at the last council meeting, it was circle back, have some discussions with the neighbors. And I think it was the most vociferous persons at the previous meeting were the folks on the north side. And I think because they were the louder voices, because the street was closer to their homes, they were concerned about traffic and noise and in traffic lights from the vehicles and the streetlights. And so, I think that we had passed along six or seven emails to the applicant and said, hey, contact these persons. These are the ones who seem to be most vocal at the meeting. It wasn't a public meeting. It was held here at City Hall, but it wasn't a public meeting that the city organized. It was organized by the developer, and they were following, I guess, the spirit of what the city council asked them to do. Certainly, here we are tonight, and there's opportunity for public comment, and we're getting lots of it. Let me look further down the list here. With regard to the trees, who will maintain those coniferous trees that are shown on the -- I'll approach the screen here. There's some coniferous trees that we had asked the developer to install as part of this project to help shield headlights from cars that are making that turn on the roadway there. There's 34 of them. It's condition number four on your resolution. Installation of 34 non-columnor coniferous tree species of at least six feet in height or greater within out Lot Y adjacent to Lot 2, Country Ridge, Plat 3, and Lot 3, Tis Delakers, prior to council acceptance of public utilities and/or prior to issuance of a building permit on any lot. So, the resident's comment was, who maintains those trees? Certainly, it's our intention that those trees be maintained in perpetuity. It may be wise that the council amend that wording to make that more bulletproof, you know, something that says, "These trees shall be maintained in perpetuity." And my understanding is that the association will own Outlot Y or Hyperion will own Outlot Y. Whoever owns the lot would be responsible for maintaining those tree species. So, it might be appropriate to make that distinction here. If you were to make a motion tonight to amend condition number four to stipulate who's responsible for maintaining those trees and for how long, certainly, it was my intention that they be maintained in perpetuity. I briefly spoke with Dave Wilberding about the streetlight issue. We feel like we could leave it in the way that it's worded in the staff report or in the resolution because it's something we can easily amend when we get to the construction drawing phase. So, there was some comments earlier from the council about, you know, how do we approach that condition? And I think it's best to just leave it in at this time the way it's worded, and when we consider the construction drawing approval, we can amend it if needed. Looking further down my list. There was questions about condition number two. Condition number two says, "Prior to any ground disturbing activity on the site, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, evidence of MPDES permit from the Iowa DNR and a city grading permit are required." That's another canned condition that we place on all plat approvals. And I think the question was, it was maybe about timing, like what ground, you know, what can happen on the site is that, do those things need to happen prior to grading of the street? And the answer is yes. The way the condition's worded is, prior to any ground disturbing activity on the site, the applicant needs to obtain a stormwater pollution prevention plan or get one submitted to the city, provide evidence of MPDES permit from Iowa DNR, and also obtain a city grading permit. I think I answered all the questions, but if there's something I missed, please let me know.
Counsel, are there any questions that Aaron missed?
Quick question. The streetlights going downwards or upwards, you say something about downcast fixtures will be installed on the north side of the drive to the start of Lot 23. Which is Lot 23 in that?
Lot 23 is the first residential lot of the proposed subdivision, and Cindy's got the mouse cursor on it right there. That's Lot 23. So, the way the condition is worded is that a standard downcast street lamp that you would see on any public street would be installed from the intersection of Northwest Beaver Drive and 1900 Drive all the way to Lot 23, and then throughout the rest of the subdivision, it would be the decorative street lamp fixture that the applicant proposed.
Beaver 23, it's downcast or upward cast?
Downcast from Beaver Drive to Lot 23. That's the way it's worded in the resolution.
Aaron, I just have a quick question about kind of process, right? Because I think you taught, you did a nice job earlier talking about, okay, this is sort of step one, the preliminary plat. And so, if the preliminary plat is approved tonight, can you talk a little bit about the next step you talked about is construction, approval of construction?
Construction drawings.
Construction drawings. So, that entails like the route of the street?
It's all the public improvements. So, it would be the public utilities, the sanitary sewer, the water, sanitary sewer and water mains, paving of the public street. That would all be shown on the construction drawings and goes through another round of review with our consulting engineer and our public works department. Typically, that comes to you on the consent agenda, but with the streetlight issue, it wouldn't appear on the consent agenda. We would revisit the streetlight issue on this one.
And so, and that's, so that's another process that has to happen.
Yes, and that's one that we typically don't notify the neighbors about.
But we'll worry about that.
Yeah.
I think, obviously, I think we've certainly learned that more notification on this one is better than less.
Sure.
So, I'll err on the side of more notification. But so, that requires another vote of the council to approve those construction plans, whether either on the consent or the non-consent agenda. It has to be approved by the council.
Correct.
So, does grading occur before the construction plans, like a grading of the road?
It can. Grading can occur at any time after the applicant's obtained a grading permit from the city.
Until they have to after tonight? Like, I guess the reason I'm asking these questions is it's not like tomorrow morning they could have a bulldozer out there and start going.
No, they haven't got approval of their grading permit at this point in time or their SWIP, their stormwater pollution prevention plan. They haven't got approval of that yet either. So, there's some administrative processes that the city will undertake to approve their grading permit and their SWIP.
Tonight sort of helps get that process going. I guess the reason I point that out is for folks who I think feel like, hey, we gotta, more things have to occur before the preliminary plat is approved. I think that's, I think that we need to understand all the steps in the process, and it's, trust me, it's confusing. It's confusing even for us sometimes. Earlier tonight, we had approval of a couple of subdivisions on final plat. So, that's at the last step of the process. So, those are all, we will have the construction plans, which will be approved by a vote of the council at some point later on, and then we'll also have the final plat, which will be done at another vote of the council at a later on staff, plus they apply for grading permits and other types of things. So, it's not like tomorrow, they're gonna be out there on the site, as Aaron has pointed out, that those, none of those kind of things you would need to go out on the site and start, you know, prepping for a road routing or that type of thing are in play. So, thank you.
Aaron, there are some endangered bats, and I, forgive me, I can't remember their names, long-eared bat or brown bat. I can't remember what they are, but they hibernate in the winter, and this would be a site that I would think could potentially have those hibernating bats. Therefore, there couldn't be any forest clearing until spring. Is that not correct?
I don't think that there is, you know, again, because this isn't a public project. It's not a, it's not a public, a project funded by local, state, or federal dollars. I don't know there's a requirement that would prohibit them from removing those trees. I could be wrong. I'm gonna turn to say Matt because he might know a little bit more about the issue. Didn't you have to deal with this recently, Matt?
Yeah, I believe it's the Indiana bat that we're talking about that roost underneath the bark of trees. Actually, the clearing process is over the winter. It, I believe it's from October.
Okay, so I have it reversed, then. They are, they are mating. That's right. They go south in the winter. So, that's why it's okay to clear in the winter. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Aaron a question? Aaron, could you describe or at least answer more pointedly, the permitting for grading for the city does not require proof or demonstration of that the grading would potentially disrupt archaeological remains?
No.
Do we ask that question at all?
I don't believe that's a question on the, on the grading permit application.
And that permit application is administratively conducted?
Yes, one of our building inspectors processes the grading permits.
Okay. If the, and perhaps the developer or their representative will need to answer this, but since they have sought jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps, is it possible that they will only delineate certain areas out of this entire development as part of their or per their jurisdiction? Or I don't understand that process well enough, and perhaps you need to share what you know.
And I would defer to the applicant on that one. They've been communicating with the Army Corps.
Okay.
Again, I think the reason the Army Corps is involved at all on this is because, again, those blue stormwater detention basins that you see on that drawing up there are damming existing streams that are considered to be waters of the state, and because they're damming waters of the state, they need to get permission from the Army Corps. If it weren't for that reason, the Army Corps wouldn't be involved in this project at all. But I would, again, defer back to the applicant on that process and what their conversations have been with the Army Corps.
All right. Thanks, Aaron.
I know this is the first I've heard of this burial mound, but is it even in an area that's going to be disturbed, that's to be graded or to be, or is it?
And I haven't received any, any of these communications, so I'm not certain where it's, where it's located. So, I would defer to the resident who stated that there's a mound.
Does the applicant have anything more to add?
On the topic of the Corps' interest in this, what they indicated to me was that they were interested in the, in the main channel, the main intermittent stream that goes through there that we're citing the three stormwater basins on, but then they're also interested in all the tributary swales going to it. So, where they delineate their, and their demarcation point is beyond that, I don't know, but pretty, it was a pretty broad area.
And we did do the Indiana bats there already?
Counsel, have any further questions for the applicant?
Mayor, developers, are there Indiana bats?
No, they're not.
All right. The other question I have is, there was a reference to Outlot Y where those coniferous trees would be, species would be placed. Who will be the owner and maintainer of those trees?
It's the Hyperion that owns that.
It's the Hyperion that owns that outlot. Um, but I know that we've had a conversation with the neighbors of those great, sort of, okay. Well, here's, you know, making sure that we're, aren't treating those trees up. And Hyperion and us as the developer through the HOA will actually ensure that we're taking care of those trees.
But it gets into that. Again, there's the HOA, we've got the development HOA, and then there's Hyperion that also has kind of an overlay. And we feel like that's where some of that's involved in that, to make sure that that's taken care of. For selfish reasons, for Hyperion and us as a developer, um, the beautification and making sure that that is, um, taken care of for the long term is important for the neighborhood and for the, and for the club.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Was pointed out on Thursday, the point that was a concern of a potential burial mound. It's a farm pond basis that we have to account for in our wetland study and it's got bob wire around it. So I don't think Indians use bob wire. So, and then the trees that are on it are fairly young.
Counsel, have any other questions?
Yes. Are you amenable to an amendment to, to the stipulation that, uh, we greater insist upon, uh, maintenance of those trees in perpetuity by the owner of that?
We would absolutely be open to the, the right language to make sure that those trees are, for Hyperion, yes.
Just something along the lines of the maintenance and by the owner of out, the, so it's right now it talks about installation. And so something like install, ins, installate, in, installation and ongoing maintenance by the owner of Outlet Y of 34 non, something like that.
Yes. Absolutely. That's fair.
That's condition number four.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, counsel?
So if, if somebody wanted to come on the property and check out this mound, would you be open to that?
Other questions?
I guess I need to have a clarification. You want to be involved in that. Are you willing to allow that? Okay. So we could add that to, um, this motion to allow a recognized archaeologist's access to that mound that they found.
That particular mound?
That particular mound to investigate it. I'm, I'm asked, I'm just asking if you're willing or how you might want to couch, couch that.
And, and I think that through that, that, oh, the wetlands delineation.
Use a microphone, please. Can you use the microphone?
A, as we apply for our application with the corps, that'll be out there that they'll, they'll want to come out and see. So I think that's when we'll be involved with them.
So we, I've heard two things. I've heard mounds that are on ridge tops and I've heard about a mound in a valley.
Creek bed. Seriously.
Creek bed. So the mound will be investigated and you will allow that to happen?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't do it again.
I was, I was the one who showed you the LiDAR map the other day. I had the location wrong. So, so the thing that you identified as a old farm pond is not the location where the archaeologist today sent me, um, a map. Okay. I, yes, I can show you on my phone. That's, I don't have a paper copy of it right now, but I wanted to make sure that since you were talking about that specific mound, on a LiDAR map, changes in elevation can be, you aren't always sure whether they're indented like a pond or, um, elevated like a mound. So when you were talking about it, I just want to make sure that the location that I know I showed you when I saw the map today, it's like, oh, that's what she's talking about. So I apologize for that change, but we, we want you to look at the thing that might actually be a human-made prehistoric mound rather than a old farm pond.
So Kathy?
Yes.
By them saying that they, they were fine with this one specific mound being investigated, does that make you feel better about this project?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm, I will put you in touch with, um, Laura, the woman from the bioarchaeology. So, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay.
Fine. You gotta have one question.
Thank you. Counsel, we have before us resolution number 22 dash 293. Uh, I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, but with an amendment to condition four of the resolution that would read, um, so after the word installation, it would add, and ongoing maintenance by the owner of outlot, outlot Y. And then it would continue with the language of 34 non-collomer coniferous tree species. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Are we doing anything with the lights?
Sorry?
I would just leave the, I think, you know, based on the staff, I, I'm comfortable leaving it the way it is. And then the staff and it's giving the, the fact it's in the preliminary plat and they can figure that out at the construction. But if others feel differently, you know, but I, I, based on the fact that that was what Dave and Aaron suggested, I'm fine with that.
I feel like there's still questions over the lights, but I, I also feel the staff can figure it out and there is an appropriate time for that. I would like to ask, um, do we feel that we need to mandate into this promotion that, um, an archaeologist being, be allowed to investigate that mound? Or do we just go with what we've heard here that the developer will allow it to happen?
I think they've made a statement in public that everyone has heard. I think.
I'm fine with that too.
I agree.
You need a second on your, oh, you already have a second.
Did you take up the entire motion?
I did.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
The motion is to approve the, the, the resolution that's in front of us, to approve the preliminary plat with the amendment adding the trees, the, the tree maintenance.
The maintenance of the trees in condition four.
Bob Busing, 6250 Oakwood Hills Drive. Uh, can you add a word that says at least 34 trees? Cause I don't want it to say, oh, we got 34 trees exactly. Can we say at least 34 trees?
Well, uh.
And this is cutting hairs, I know that, but.
I know it says at least six feet in height. I mean, so, so the trees can be taller than the six feet.
True.
I, I, I think it depends on this sizing of it.
I don't want it to be limited to 34.
Excuse me. We, uh, we've, we have a motion and a second. We've had the council discussion. The public comments ceased before the motion was made.
Yeah, I think we're done.
Sorry to be a parliament, uh, parliamentarian, uh, parliamentarian in this matter, but, but we, uh, we need to move on. So we have a motion and a second discussion. Any further discussion, counsel? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Motion passed. I want to thank you all for being here and having a good discussion again on this item. There will be other opportunities for public input as we go through this process. So thanks, thanks to developers. Thanks to all the, uh, neighbors for working together on this. Really appreciate it.
And I would encourage Aaron, when we get to that point of the construction plan process, that, that whatever, a, a robust communication plan be developed for that.
Moving on to item 7G, consider approval of claims in the amount of $2,237,659.67. Two of approval. Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Welcome, city administrator.
Thank you.
My apologies. Do you have any, uh, do you have any comments for us?
I just want to thank the mayor for being my first meeting last week and just the warm welcome I received from staff and the public. Um, just a few things, you know, we, we had a really good discussion with the pickleball at Crown Point last week. 26 individuals showed up to that meeting. I know councilmember Burkhardt was there also. But I've been making rounds, um, made a library board trustees meeting just to introduce myself. And certainly for the public, if there's any meetings you want me to attend or be a part of, I'm, I'm happy to be there. Uh, just one bit of news. I know it's not a city activity, but it affects city hall here. Uh, holidays at Johnston Town Center will be on Saturday, December 3rd from 6 to 8. Encourage, uh, council and public to attend that event. Always. Thank you.
City council comments. Councilman Evans?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember ready?
Uh, no, I have no comment, but just want to let you know next meet, next meeting, I won't be here. I'll be on vacation.
For you. Councilman Coe?
Um, last, last week I had the opportunity as part of the, um, the MAC group, which is made up of council members and mayors from across the metro area, to tour the, uh, recycling facility that's in Grimes that's operated by Metro Waste Authority. It's a really, really impressive location. And I would strongly encourage, it's operational Monday through Thursday, uh, from Friday from eight in the morning till 10, or eight in the morning till four in the afternoon. And this, it's a really, I, I really, I think Metro Waste Authority deserves a lot of credit for investing in, in building really a state of the art, a piece of, uh, facility that does a great job. You know, we were there on a Tuesday. So all the green trucks that came to Johnston and, and on the east side of town were unloading and that they unload and they go through and sort all the stuff out. And, uh, and it's a very high tech way that they do it. And it's really cool because I think you, you see that the stuff that people are putting in their green recycling bins is actually then being recycled and turned into other stuff. And it's not going into the landfill. It's actually, um, doing kind of what I think we would all hope it would be doing. So I would encourage you to, um, and I'd be happy if you ever have an interest in going out there or taking a group out there to go out there and go out while it's operational, because you can really see the, the equipment going. So it's a great place.
A couple of things very quickly. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I, I serve, speaking of kind of broader committee, committees that we represent, Johnston on Bravo will be holding its quarterly board meeting coming up, uh, on the Wednesday following, um, or I guess a week from Wednesday. If you have comments or concerns about that, let me know. I also, uh, want to adopt a, a couple of, uh, things, uh, and certainly in the season of an attitude of gratitude. Um, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Um, we are all afforded in abundance and, and I certainly, uh, encourage you all as we enter all of this holiday season to continue to consider those who don't have as much as us. Uh, I'm thankful for each one of you sitting at this dais, um, for your insight and for your experience and for your willingness to take a risk on us. Um, I think we're a good risk, but at the same point, I, I can't express enough how grateful I am. Councilmember Evans, I'm calling you out tonight in a really good way. I did it intentionally. Um, Councilmember Evans, I really appreciate your problem solving when it comes to even this parking in the bulbs and even trying to discuss whether or not, uh, post office boxes or, or mailboxes can be moved from that standpoint. That's an outstanding way for us to try to address the needs of our citizens without putting blinders on. I hope that they continue to pursue that or at least look at that as a, as an opportunity. And I really appreciate you, uh, suggesting that. Um, my thanks to the city staff. You continue to countlessly put in hours on our behalf to answer questions behind the scenes, but also, um, to those that I put on the spot tonight, thank you for doing so graciously and answering so thoughtfully. You always do that well. Um, but certainly, uh, it helps then allow us to make legally, uh, the correct decisions as well as thoughtful decisions as we hear, uh, resident comments. Um, to all that you all do, thank you. I thank you. And I know the residents of Johnston do as well.
Hard to go after. Councilman Burkhardt. Um, I want to thank Matt for providing excellent maps. Those are excellent maps and I'm sure Councilman Coe really appreciates them. Um, I will also say that I had a delightful conversation with our new city administrator at, uh, Panera's last week, and I encourage you all to go out to lunch with him. Actually, it was, I guess it was a coffee and a soda, but still, same thing.
Does he pay?
Actually, we paid her. Yeah, no, he didn't pay. And I didn't pay him. But, uh, and as he asked me, like, what kind of relationship do I want with him? And I said, I think we should be best buds. So.
It's not working out.
Good start.
Good.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being patient with me tonight. Um, I've got this ear infection going on in both of my ears and I can only hear about this much of everything that's being said. Uh, by the next time we meet, I'm, I'm confident it'll be gone, but, uh, I appreciate your tolerance putting up with me this evening. Um, speaking of, you know, the, the season of giving, um, the mayor's run for food will, uh, it will occur again this year. So starting December 1st through the entire month of December, it'll be your, your opportunity to give $10 for a bag of food to the Johnson Food Pantry. And in return, I will run a mile beginning New Year's Eve Day. So you'll be seeing more of that, uh, you know, on our city website and, and the Facebook as well. But keep that in mind as you're thinking about, you know, how much food you have to eat come Thursday and, uh, others in our community that don't, don't have what we all, we all have the benefit of having. The other thing that I do want to mention is Matt Gray and I have been meeting with, uh, representatives of the DOT, including the director on interstate signage. We're making some progress. Um, we have another meeting scheduled tomorrow with the, the corps. Uh, the process is that, um, with the signs that are out there right now, that's what, essentially that's what the federal government allows for interstate signage. So if you want a space on a sign, you've got to negotiate with others who are already on the signs to see if you can't do some moving around and, and opening up some, some space for, for you. Now that's, that's not the case with, you know, places where there are not, not signs already. And we already have our bids in for, for some of the signage that'll go on on 141 and on, uh, 100th Street, 86th?
86th.
86th. Uh, but the ones that are on Merle Hay Road and, and coming from the east, that, those are the ones that we're having, having those discussions with other agencies or organizations. So anyway, we are making progress and I saw the director again last Friday and he said that we will get signs. So I'm going to hold him to that, that commitment. So just an update on that. I should probably also mention that the second and last meeting of the legislate, legislature's interim committee on, uh, alternative funding for DART occurred last Friday. And, uh, I think it was quickly recognized by the, uh, the voting members of the committee, as well as the co-chairs of the committee, that two meetings was not adequate to make recommendations to the legislature on what would be an appropriate alternative funding source for, for DART services. So what we decided, and I made the motion, what we decided is just to take the, you know, the previous studies that were done, the information that was gathered in this process, submit that as findings to the legislature. you know, the previous studies that were done, the information that was gathered in this process, submit that as findings to the legislature, and, you know, encourage them to review that information as they continue the discussion about alternative funding sources for DART. So I think that was, that was the best result that we could have under those circumstances. So you'll probably hear more about that in the weeks and months to come as well, so. Anything else for the good of the order?
So I attended an event last week, Johnston Girls Wrestling. I don't know if you guys have heard about this, but we had a meet at the new high school in Waukees. Johnston varsity girls wrestling consists of four girls. And three of those girls pinned their opponent in both of their matches. One girl did not, just acted to be my goddess. But it is, I could not have been prouder to be a Johnston parent. They were up against Valley Southeast Polk, you know, the big schools, the big schools all brought, you know, 20 girls, 30 girls, and then Johnston brought four. And it was just really cool. So I am saying, if you're really bored and want to go to a wrestling event, it's, it's a lot of fun. I think it's different than, than guys wrestling. Guys wrestling is a lot of strength and a lot of grudge, you know? Girls wrestling is all technique. It's, it's, you know, they're not there to see who can out-strengthen the other when they're, you know? It's, it's just different. It's fun. So I just wanted to promote that.
We should also note that Johnston High School football team had an important breakthrough this year by making the state semifinals, had an opportunity, and I'm sure others did too, to head up to Cedar Falls and watch them play very valiantly against a very, very good Southeast Polk team. But that was their first trip ever to the dome. I'm sure they're gonna be back. It's a great group of young people, and we got a lot of great young people in our community, but great, great, great start to the year for the school district.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.